Good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Agenda setting work session for Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. It's nine oh five AM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Claus. Commissioner Mahia is on Zoom. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. Public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We are going to be here till twelve with a short break in the middle, and we have two agendas to review as well as some standing items and an executive session. So we'll be as efficient as we can. First up is review of the draft agenda for this afternoon's meeting, which will be called to order at 2:00 PM. Pledge of allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Fornier and approval of the agenda, followed by a presentation. Proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Correct to the board, anything we need to know about this one? I know you said Lynn Crowley will be available? In person or on? Questions from the board on the proclamation? Okay. The opportunity for the public to address the board, County Manager update, anything you anticipate presenting today?
No, not this time.
Okay. Consent items, we have five, and three A is central services lease amendment extension between Thurston County Sheriff's Department and J four associates. Richard King, Capital Project Manager.
All right, so this is a one-year lease extension between the Thurston County Sheriff's Department Field Operations Building and J four Associates. It's at the seven seven two one New Market Street Building. The extension is for one year. The rental rate will remain unchanged, and the only difference is that there will be no cancellations for this year.
Read this one last week, so.
Same thing you said last week.
Yeah, good to go. Good to go last week. Good to go this week. Item three B, emergency services, professional services contract with Olympia Emergency Services, and Dan Miller Todd is here, Emergency Services Director.
Just as a reminder, this is the contract that offsets the MPD's time at Medic One as well as an MPD delegate. As we discussed last week, it's an increase of point five percent each year, and otherwise, within the description or any other changes that were discussed. If you have any questions for me, please let me know.
How do you get by with point five? That's pretty good in today's inflationary world.
I would, I would agree. It's a.
Okay, good.
I would highly recommend supporting this, supporting this contract.
Okay, very good. Good to go. We see human resources resolution to reclassify positions. This is the item that we discussed last time, the reclassification. I think there was quite a bit of discussion. I don't know if there are any questions at this point. Through this one, I've said a fair number of times. I don't see any questions. Go on to three D, Public Health and Social Services lease with Capital Recovery Center for Drug User Help Syringe Services Program. Katie Strozick is here from Public Health Social Services. Hi, Katie.
Hi. So this is a renewal of our lease for a certain services program at Capital Recovery Center at one thousand Cherry Street Downtown. We've been there for over ten years. This is just an extension of the lease to run March twenty twenty four through March twenty twenty five. It's at the same rate of three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars per month, same other terms of the lease that we've had. It's just a continuation.
Okay, nothing different here. Anybody? All right, thank you, Katie. Good to go. Item three E is auditor voucher list for week of April fifteenth. And I'm assuming no questions from the board on three E. Okay, on to department items for A, Public Health and Social Services contract for submerged aquatic vegetation activities for lake management districts. Whitford right behind me.
You're behind me. Yeah, so as we talked about before, this is the contract for all of the lake management districts to tap into aquatechnics for submerged aquatic weeds management in those four lakes. And as I mentioned, we have a prescription that they all agreed to last year that kind of guides our principles of how that's going to happen. So I'm just hoping you guys will allow us to execute the contract today.
And there is a general need or urgency on at least the part of two. Alan DZU are older ones, right? Because they need to start getting things moving for May.
Okay, I don't see any questions. Thanks, Stuart. Next up is four B, professional services contract. Gretchen Toller from Public Health. Is she online? Okay, there you are. Hey, Gretchen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gretchen Toller from Public Health and Community Wellness, and this is our professional services contract with Lewis County. It's a contract that we've had every year, so it's a renewal, and it is to provide nursing home partnership services to families in Lewis County.
Question on the nurse family partnership extension contract with Lewis County? Nope. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works is up. Five A, contract award for asset management information system needs assessment and requirements documentation. Chair? Yes.
I just, there's a difference between last week's when we went over it and this week's on the professional services. And I just wonder, it's ten percent says, and this week's?
Which item, Commissioner?
On D.
Okay, Gretchen's still here. You got a question?
What was the difference on the ten percent? Is that something you can or can't do?
I think, sorry, is it the difference of, do you mean the dollar amount for the contract went down, or do you mean the ten percent?
Just add it in there on the ten percent. I'm wondering, some contracts have it, some don't.
In the part that says do not exceed ten percent? Gretchen's referring to where it says to execute agreement and any other amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
I just, it's changed, and I'm wondering why.
Changed from last week's?
Yeah, just a little change.
Ten percent of the.
I just, I try to keep track of some contracts do it and some don't do it. I just, just asking the question. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. You know, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, it should have been on it for last week. I thought that we typically do put it on ours so that way they, you know, if they offered us an increase in the year, which I don't think will happen, but it would be nice that we could accept it. So we try to usually always put it on, so I don't know if.
Hmm, this is what I have from last week. Uh, maybe not. Okay, we're good. It's a minor thing.
Just to interject, our purchasing policies and procurement policies allow up to ten percent. Just as a standard.
Standard.
That's right.
I just wondered, sometimes it's in there and sometimes it's not.
They can add up to ten percent, and some of you may recall when departments were putting anywhere up to fifty percent.
Yeah, right.
You put a lid on that, by policy, it can be up to ten percent. So this is just standard length.
And some have it, some, okay.
That's right.
That's fine. Thank you. Sorry for that interruption.
No problem. Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director is here.
Thank you. So this is a contract award request for a needs assessment for our asset management system. We use this to record maintenance and repair activities on all of our assets, how we plan and schedule our work. I talked previously that our, our current system, which we've had in place for about fifteen years, is just not serving us well any longer. So we've worked with Sheri in the IT Department to put together a scope of work contract with a consultant to help map current and future process to build for the needs assessment for a future potential replacement of our system. The funding for this work is coming from the variety of funds that we have within Public Works for the different systems. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
There's always more than one Public Works item now. Five B, interlocal agreement for anti-icing materials sales for road operations, Tomwater School District. And I see Mike Lowman.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an ILA that provides a mechanism for the Tomwater School District to purchase anti-icing materials from the county in support of their maintenance activities. I'm happy to answer any questions.
C, or you hear none, so thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Five C, Public Works striping paint purchase. Matt Unselman's here. County Road Engineer.
Good morning, Matt Unselman, Thurston County Engineer. Becky Khan, the County Traffic Engineer, will be presenting this item this afternoon. Public Works stripes approximately six hundred miles of roadway each year, which requires twelve thousand gallons of yellow paint and another fifteen thousand gallons of white paint. The paint lane, the paint lines on Thurston County roadways are refreshed every year on the arterial and collector roadway so that we can meet the reflectivity requirements of state and federal law. Public Works intends to piggyback off of Pierce County's competitively bid project for paint, which meets the technical specifications for rapid dry, key word, waterborne paint currently in use at Thurston County. The unit price is sixteen oh five per gallon for a total of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. The Pierce County contract meets all of the county procurement requirements. So to summarize my request or the Public Works request, Public Works is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a contract with a RAMSCO for four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Questions for Matt?
Twenty-seven thousand gallons of paint?
It's a lot of paint.
Every year that you put down. That's, that's amazing.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty gallons at a time. They come in two hundred and fifty gallon barrels, and I think we have seven truckloads of barrels coming this year.
Nice. All right, thank you. Finally, for Public Works is five D, resolution for temporary closure of Black Lake Billmore between Black Lake Boulevard and Sap Road.
Brian Meyer, our design manager in Public Works, will be presenting this item this afternoon. This item is requesting to temporarily close Black Lake Billmore Road between Black Lake Boulevard and Sap Road. This is in order to accommodate the construction project of the Black Lake Billmore Bridge Approach Repair Project. As you can recall, that project installs five hundred and forty piling to support the bridge approaches and prevent them from continuing to settle. This closure would be up to twelve weeks, twelve consecutive weeks between June first and October thirty-first. This section of Black Lake Billmore has an average daily traffic volume of a little bit more than forty-six hundred trips. A detour route will be put in place. The detour route will be about four, four point five miles long and will take approximately eight miles to go around.
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes. Oh, yeah, four point five and eight miles to go around doesn't make sense, does it? A communication plan to notify stakeholders such as local residents, emergency responders, school districts, and nearby businesses has been developed, and will also be providing notice in the county newspaper per state law requirements.
Questions? Nope. Okay, thank you. All right. Items six A and six B are sheriff's department items, kind of connected because we've handled them. Single source purchase of two different pieces of technology related to pursuit safety and as a pilot, I think, for each, so. Do we? Talked about it, Elaine. Yeah, we've had multiple briefings, so that's fine, but Commissioner Claus?
Well, I have a couple of questions that I don't know, I mean, if we don't have anyone from the sheriff's department, then I don't know if anyone in the room can answer, but maybe. So I, I still kind of stand where I was last time we talked in hoping that we can remove the item from the agenda for a couple of reasons, primarily fiscal reasons. We heard last time that there's a grant they're applying for from Commerce that's due in about six weeks. I would like to see what happens with that grant. I'm, after looking extensively into these items, I am for them. I think anything we can do to improve safety when it comes to like pit maneuvers, pursuit law changing, I understand all of that. And I think that it's a good thing to improve or kind of decrease the risk wherever we can. But I'm hoping that we can hold off on making this decision until we know if they're going to get that grant money because we want to protect the general fund, particularly after the conversation yesterday, it's feeling even more like it's feeling even more relevant to me. The questions that I have that I don't know if anyone here knows the answer to is do we know if this fund, so like, let's say we approve it now, and then they get the grant funding down the road. Would the grant money be able to reimburse the expenses? I know usually that's not the case, but I'm just curious. And then another kind of follow-up to that is if this money were to come from the general fund, and I'm totally speculating because I haven't, I saw everything they sent, but it has nothing about the grant request. So I am wondering, like, if we were to spend this money out of the general fund, would that be reimbursable versus if the sheriff were to absorb the cost and then potentially that would be reimbursable if the money's going directly back to them? But I don't know if anyone can answer that since.
Yeah, I don't think we have the specifics on the grant. What we can ask is the sheriff to provide something to the board about the grant process, what the grant covers. I think currently the item is asking for general fund, correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, two items?
I thought he was going to purchase out of vacancies.
Asking for approval for the sole source.
Gotcha.
He said general fund last time we were here.
He did. Yep, well, it would be out of general fund for.
His vacancy savings are in general.
It's all the same, right? Essentially.
Yeah, but I think to your point, the clarity that if he's using his vacancy savings, we can ask if they get the grant, if, how that would. I mean, if the money comes in, I'm sure then that's going to displace the money that they're using for the product.
My, so I was, I, again, I'm kind of with Commissioner Claus. I have no problem with acquisition of this technology as a pilot to see how it works. I was just, as I was reviewing my notes, I was realizing I didn't understand the financing mechanism either.
Gotcha.
And if we're not being asked for additional appropriation, which would have had to have been a budget request anyway, then really, I'm just saying this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it would have to come out of his, it would have to basically be absorbed, which, if that's the situation, then I don't have an issue with that because he, if it wasn't a sole source, he could go get it anyway without our authority. I mean, he's got the budget appropriation. So if the, if the decision point today is just the single source issue, then I don't have an issue. But I wanted to confirm for myself that that, that I had a correct understanding of the financial piece of it because I would like to, whatever financing mechanisms we've got, you know, obviously I'd like to see this not hit the general fund. If there's, if it's related to public safety tax or. All he's asking for is sole source, and these are like, these are under fifty thousand, so he wouldn't even have to come here if it wasn't for the sole source thing, is that?
If it were not for sole source, it would be within his expenditure authority. However, I would say, yeah, there's.
Right, Robin, and then I'll go to you, Sheriff.
So our purchasing policy is specific that you cannot break things up just to stay under a limit.
Okay, you cannot what?
You can't break up a purchase. He has talked about this being a pilot, and eventually he will most likely purchase more. So you can't just break things up to stay under a limit.
Sheriff, we're, everybody's good with the acquisition of this. We're just trying to make sure we all understand where the money's coming from. Since we had a very long budget meeting yesterday that, you know, kind of going through. So anyway, anything you could shed on where the, how this will be paid?
Well, if we could absorb it, I mean, at the end of the day, this will be an amendment request at the end of the year. So whether it becomes a general fund request or if there's money in our, our budget to absorb it, we would, we would just absorb it then.
Wasn't there a reimbursement question?
Sheriff, the grant that you would apply for, can you speak a little bit to that? I know that it's a competitive process, but if you were to get the grant, how would that offset the cost?
Well, this would be before the grant. So the, the issue that we had last time when we applied for the grant was we weren't very competitive because we were trying to start up something brand new that we, we couldn't say, you know, this is an existing program, we're going to build on it. So this would be the county funding the initial piece of it, and then the grant would fund additional, would fund additional pieces. Because this is only five units, I can't remember which way. It's five units of Star Chase, I think, and six Grapplers or vice versa. That's not very many in the grand scheme of our, our fleet. And so the grant piece of this would then provide additional, you know, up to a hundred thousand dollars of additional funding, which is where the sole source piece also comes in, because we'll be right back here doing the exact same process again for sole source, even through the grant process. Just because it's a grant and we receive funding for that doesn't mean that we get to not participate in the sole source process as well. So with this, we'd already be done, if that makes sense, with that sole source, be able to continue to buy more of these units. But in the meantime, this would hopefully give us a chance to look at which ones more feasible.
I will say too, like, if you weren't to get the grant, I would support purchasing this. If you, I lost my train of thought, but yeah, if, if the grant were to not go through, then I would support the purchase of these items. I just, I think it's important to consider also vacancy saving, using vacancy savings for equipment, I know, is something that we, we do. But with like trying to fill the staffing vacancies that you have, still paying overtime, still trying to get your staffing up to full capacity, I think that those are important things to consider if we're looking at a delay versus, I mean, if this were to come before us later, I would approve it because I think that the systems are a, a good opportunity to practice safer pursuit measures. But I just think that if we're waiting on a grant that's due in about five weeks now, it sounds like. I mean, I think that there's reason to be competitive, and I think your staff probably are going to do a good job applying for that grant. But if it were to not go through, then I would definitely support the purchase of this in the future.
And if the grant does go through, that money kicks in in twenty twenty-five. So it, we're kind of right back to the, to the same piece here, which is that the laws are changing on June sixth. This was just our efforts to try and mitigate some of that stuff. I mean, even now it's been delayed a few times. We're not going to get this stuff on the road by June sixth. But the idea, hopefully, maybe we can get some on the road by July or August. So it, it's just the timing of it is just, of course, what the board has to decide on here.
Commissioner Edward.
So what we're going to approve is the sole source and strictly up to the sheriff to decide what he wants to get. Is that what I'm hearing?
So you're approving the contract that goes with the sole source. That's right.
Okay, okay. And you're, you're not going to be able to get these on the vehicles in time for that law change, is that? I thought maybe you'd get ahead of the curve because you knew some of the players or something, no?
I mean, it's, it's just, it's going to take probably a month to actually acquire the materials, and then we've got to get the stuff trained up and then get them installed, and then get the instructors trained up. So no, I would, I would say a realistic timeframe at this point is, is going to be the July, August area.
Time is of the essence. If we delay this, just farther, farther delay down the road, is that right?
This is just one of those things, right, where pursuits are, are, can be risky. We're going to continue to train our staff on trying to mitigate that risk. These are just additional tools. So again, it, it's just one of those things where I think at this point, the, you know, risk has weighed in, I've weighed in. It's just, it's up to the commissioners on whether or not this is a good investment.
I'm glad.
Oh, go ahead.
Let's say, I'm glad that you made that point, Chip, because I was going to ask you, I mean, you're trying to, and I'm, I'm supporting this, so this is kind of a sidebar for me, but the idea that there's this timing deadline that, you know, right now you're not, right now people are. right now you're not, right now people are fleeing the police, and now you'll be able to pursue them, but really you're in control of that. I mean, you, you should be training your folks not to engage in overly unnecessarily risky pursuits. So to some degree, you've got some control over how risky the situation is, because it's not a matter of, it's just a matter of how much better we can make it in terms of the.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And our, our staff are, we're going through another day of EVOC training, another day of driving training with a classroom-based pursuit decision-making course for all of our staff. So we are doing those things. It's just no matter how much you train someone, we, we can't, just, we can't determine what a suspect is going to do in a vehicle. We just have the tools and the training to try and stop them as best we can. You know, a, a good example of that is, you know, even right now under the no pursuit laws, you know, Fife did a traffic stop, suspect in a stolen vehicle, the vehicle takes off, the deputy or the officer turns their lights off, never pursues, car T-bones someone, injures them, Fife getting sued. Fife is going to end up probably paying out money on that. I mean, it's just one of those things where no matter what we do, this is a very litigious society, and the work that we engage in can be risky, even if we have the training and the, and all that kind of stuff. We're making good decisions, you know, bad things still happen. This is just a tool to help reduce the likelihood of those bad things happening, especially in these scenarios that we've seen recently where you've got the F-250 that we cannot stop. But we're not going to stop chasing him because he's an assault first degree suspect. So it's a matter of hoping the vehicle breaks down, which it did. Same thing with the trail pursuit. We can't get on either side of the vehicle to do a pit maneuver. Either one of these pieces of technology could have deescalated that pursuit, either stopped it or tagged it with a GPS dart and waited. So these are just opportunities that we've seen based on real scenarios that have played out despite the training and decision-making.
Yeah, I guess I was just, I was just thinking about how June 6th is not like everything gets worse on June 6th. It's just, it may not get better as fast as we want it to. I mean, if you chose not to do certain pursuits until we were able to, anyway, I, I just, yeah, but you understand what I'm, what I'm making.
I do, I can see it.
I just, I want to say that I, I'd like it, I'd like to, I'd like it to stay on the agenda, and then we at least discuss this, figure it out during the open meeting. And if the board wants to remove it from the agenda at that point, do it with a vote and make it seem. This has been something that's been reported on, it's been something that's discussed at length. I, I wouldn't want to just wipe it from the agenda during a work session and let it linger. I would say put it out in the arena during the meeting and let the board figure it out.
I have a personal question about that recommendation. If we were to do it that way, I don't think that's a bad idea, just procedurally, I'm wondering, if we were to remove it from the agenda during the meeting, we would have to have that discussion when we set the agenda in the beginning, right? Because otherwise, if we waited until the vote, we would have to basically vote no.
You could do a number of things. You could, you could, you could, you could make an, you could make a, a motion at the beginning of the meeting when the agenda comes up to remove that. Somebody, he could make a motion to approve the agenda, you could amend his motion to try and remove that from the agenda. You wait till it comes up. And my, my preference would be, and what I would plan on doing is making the motion when it comes up, and then when the motion's made, that allows for discussion, because you're not really supposed to discuss a motion before a motion's been made. So you come in, the sheriff presents his information, the vice chair, I move, blah, 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 as it's written on there, and then it opens up for discussion, you debate, and there's rules to that debate, you know, you're supposed to start, but whatever.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then whatever happens, happens, is what I would battle it out.
My request too. I, I would just think that this should be an open discussion in the public forum, and then commissioners vote. They vote on whether.
Arm wrestle?
And we might have to arm wrestle, we'll see.
Yeah, Gary will arm wrestle for it. Emily's been practicing.
Okay, thank you, that helps. I, okay, so a couple of questions came up. The amendment request, Sheriff, you mentioned, I was wondering if anybody could explain, clarify the process of that? And then, so that's one question, and then the maintenance of effort level, I'm wondering how this plays into that? So like, since it's coming from vacancy savings, does that contribute towards the maintenance of effort level? That would be.
Effort doesn't change.
But this would count towards it?
Maintenance of effort is a, a minimum amount that you have to spend out of the general fund.
Yeah, that part I understand.
That was set in 2023.
Right.
So when we spend more now, it doesn't raise that.
That's correct.
Floor, is that what you're?
Yeah, I'm saying would this count towards the maintenance of effort level, rather than being additional?
By doing the shift the way we've set it up, you've satisfied maintenance of effort, regardless of what it's spent on.
Okay, when does that shift happen, is it?
So you just approved yesterday on a three to two vote.
I know, when does that shift happen, is my question?
Happen once the board approves the budget amendment. June 4th, I think, is the date that you approve the amendment.
Okay.
But it's based on the 2023 appropriation level?
That's right.
Okay, yeah, I understand that part.
Whether it was saved or spent, or shifted to some other thing, from, from a FTE to a grappler?
Awesome, thank you.
What I meant by the budget amendment process is that I believe the, the deadline to do the budget amendment right now has already passed. So in October, I believe, Robin, can you, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I believe in October.
I don't understand what you're asking, Sheriff, related to this and the budget amendment.
That we would request funding if we get to the end of this, because you're, you're basically.
Why would you ask for funding if you're suggesting you could absorb it within your vacancies savings? Are you saying you would not be able to do this within vacancy savings?
I think he's talking about a potential expansion of the program after this initial pilot.
With the grant.
If it turns out next, the end of the year.
If you receive a grant, that would come through on the midterm. We're not doing a second amendment in the first year.
That's what he was referring to, I think, Sheriff, maybe your, the terminology was wrong, but I, I think that's in essence what you were referring to, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if he gets a grant and the program's able to be expanded, you bring that back so that there's the procedural component that allows him to actually spend the money.
Okay.
But he, he doesn't even need that if he's got sufficient authority.
Okay, so we can talk offline about how that happens, and we hope you get the grant, so we hope we get to have that conversation with you.
Right.
So I would just, that was an interesting point that you make, that I, everything you said is accurate in terms of the process, but I just have a, like, different perspective on it. I mean, I, this is a public meeting, the afternoon's a public meeting. I was actually told as a, when I got interested in the county, like, don't care about, like, watch the agenda setting meeting. So anytime I wanted to watch a meeting, I came to this meeting. So whether some things, the commissioners have, we have a right, if there's three votes, to remove it right now. Whether we wait till, it's kind of, it's esoteric whether or not we decided to waive, to waive that and decide to delay that decision, you know?
My thinking was that just, this has been a publicly, I don't know, I wouldn't say hot topic, but it's been a, it's been a topic, and so.
But the Olympian watches these meetings probably more, if you're talking about public, you know, media attention, and the people, the insiders that know what goes on, it's like they're watching this meeting more than they're watching the afternoon meeting. But whatever, either way.
Our work session on this last week was on COMO 4, so I know they're watching.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so.
Say something stupid.
It, um.
No, you didn't.
It could be handled now or later. I mean, I don't know if you're going to have another vote to remove, you still, is that still your desire to remove it from the agenda?
Yeah, I still think, it's just, I think it's important to wait until that grant comes through. I agree with what you said about just because the pursuit laws are changing doesn't necessarily mean that pursuits will just inherently become more dangerous. That's up to the sheriff's discretion on how he runs his department. And that was kind of a point I was thinking too, but I hadn't brought it up because I wanted to focus on the financial piece, because that's really my, my main concern, and I didn't want it to come off like I don't support the equipment, because I do. It's just the timing of it. And if it's like, well, the pursuit laws are changing, and that's the sense of urgency, and I understand you want to act on the state's new law as soon as you can, but if it's coming down to, we're waiting on this equipment, we have to wait an additional six months before we can really, I, I don't know, I mean, that would be up to you, Sheriff, how you run your department.
I, I would, I would, I would argue against both of you on the, it doesn't make it more risky, because it does. He, the, the sheriff, you know, once, once the state says, yes, you are obligated to pursue these people again, he, he can't just ignore that, right? You know, he can't, I'm guessing, the sheriff can't go, well, you know, going after murderers is dangerous, so we're not going to do that until we come up with some solutions to make it less dangerous. Right now, they say you can't pursue unless, and they're going to change that, he has to respond to that. He doesn't just get to pick and choose what laws he's going to enforce or not. But I mean, he gets to figure out how, but, you know, once that, once those restrictions are lifted, he, he's going to have to respond.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big thing, right, of course, I could make my pursuit policy today, say, we're not chasing anything. We'll let a school shooter drive away, but we're not going to do that. That's not what I ran on, that's not what I ran, that's not what I'm, that's not been my mentality in law enforcement today. So certainly, yes, on June 6th, I could tell all of my staff, hey, status quo, we're going to keep doing the same thing that we've already been doing, but that's not what I've been testifying up on the Hill for two years for. That's not what the public has been, the public has been demanding for law enforcement to do something about the fact that we're the third worst state in the country for auto theft. Auto theft will now be a pursuable offense, and so it is our perspective in law enforcement, I speak for myself at least at my agency, that pursuing some of these stolen cars is going to deter more people from continuing to use those stolen cars to commit other crimes. And so, yeah, there's, there's a lot of semantics to this, there's a lot of nuance to it, of course. But yes, as an elected official, I can tell you that our policy is going to allow deputies to pursue for any law violation, from turn signals all the way to homicide. Now, once they engage in that pursuit, it will be up to the deputy and that supervising sergeant to determine, is this worth it? And that's always a question that we have to answer at any point in time, is it worth it, right? We're going ninety in a school zone for no turn signal, is it worth it? Well, the, the difference between capturing that person, because I can tell you, we're, we're going to terminate that pursuit, given the circumstances, is can we tag it with a GPS dart, or can we catch it with a net immediately to stop the pursuit? Or in that case, do we let that person go? That's going to be the, the nuance in all of this. So it's kind of both, I guess is the best way to put it. Like, pursuits are going to increase because the qualifiers to pursue a vehicle are, are, are increasing. There's going to be more opportunity to pursue all these cars that are driving away. The, the difference is, of course, in how quickly we can end that pursuit, whether we tag it with a dart and let it drive off and find it later, or we use a pit maneuver, or we grab it with a net, there's all these different things. But right now, we just have two options. We've got pursue it until you spike it, or pursue it until you pit it. Those are the two, we're just trying to increase the toolbox there. But there, so no one is exactly completely right here. I, I think that's the biggest thing I'm just trying to say, is that there is going to be nuance, there is going to be risk no matter what. We're incurring risk already. It's just, there's, there's going to be more vehicles that run here after June 6th that are pursuable. That's, that's going to be the biggest difference. So we are going to see a quantifiable increase in pursuits, I can guarantee you.
Alright, so is there a motion on the table to?
I still, I don't mean to drag, so I have a couple more questions, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Hopefully we can just make them quick. Can you help me understand one more time the timeline for acquisition? I know you're on a waitlist for these items, so if you were to, if we were to approve it, when would you be able to acquire them? Did you say July?
No, we are not on a waitlist, we would purchase them immediately, shipping and handling. So, you know, I, I would safely say, you know, give that a month, I don't, I don't. I buy a lot of stuff on Amazon, but I haven't bought much stuff from, from some of these ones. You know, I don't, I don't think they have next day delivery or anything like that. And then the biggest thing is like, it's going to take a little bit to get those first ones installed, because they actually come to the county shops and train the county shops employees how to install them, and then we get the people trained, and then out on the road. So Star Chase is already going to be up here, is the other piece. So they're going to be training some other agencies, because other agencies have started purchasing from them. So they'll actually already be up here, and then it's just about scheduling the time for the members of like the grapplers to come up here and get the training and installation stuff done.
Okay, thank you. And you actually touched on my next question, which was the shipping and handling costs were not included in the paperwork that we received. So I was wondering if you have an estimate for how much that would be, and would that be coming from the same fund?
I, I do not, but I can check on that and get back to you.
Okay, do you know if it would come from the same fund?
For.
Shipping and handling, yeah.
Yeah, we would pay it all in one.
Okay. Okay, and that's, I only have one more question, and that's, can you provide us with the sole source letter? That is mentioned that you received it, but I didn't see it in the packet, the one from the vendor? That says that you're getting the lowest price?
Yep.
Okay.
It doesn't say we're getting the lowest price, I don't believe. It says that there's no one else out there like them, is what the sole source piece is probably going to be. I believe.
The document is attached to the.
There's also an email, so I'll get that here.
We already have that?
That one.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll look through it again, I saw that there was a box check saying there was a letter, and I didn't see the letter, but I'll double check. I'll go through it again.
Right. If we're missing something, please let me know.
Okay. That's my last question.
Okay, then I will move forward. We've got Superior Court, 7A, Tacticology Services Contract for Superior Court Programs. Thank you, Sheriff Sanders.
Thank you.
Who's presenting this item? Do we have this moment Superior Court? I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone either.
We did review this last week. Any questions about this? Commissioner Mihia, you're the former court insider, good to go. And we'll just move on. And then Sabrina will join us this afternoon. Scanning the items, and that'll be the drop off to the upcoming agenda. So now we look at next week's proposed agenda, Tuesday, May 7th. Again, call to order at 2:00 PM, and pledge allegiance to be led by Commissioner Mihia. We have the agenda, approval, the proclamation for public service recognition week.
Yeah, I'll pass over to Amy.
The proclamation will be jointly accepted by, by human services, or human resources and public works.
Public Health and Public Works, is that what you said?
I'm sorry, human resources.
Oh, HR and, okay, Commissioner Mihia.
I actually think we should do one for each department.
Okay.
A proclamation, an office.
Have them all come out?
And, you know, it will be just more signing for us, right? But it can be delivered via your office or, or whatever. But I think. But, but I just think it's just a nice, and I was wondering, are there any plans for public service recognition that we've heard from HR that they're planning to do?
I've not heard of any.
Yeah, you have.
Oh, have we?
The Spirit Week and.
Oh, that's right, well, I asked what was Spirit Week, but no one responded to the emails, so.
Thought I saw a response, but okay.
I haven't gotten to it yet. So explain what Spirit Week is.
So the HR has planned a Spirit Week, and that is where, each day for five days, there's a different event, just off the top of my head, one day is Wear Your County Colors Day, there's a Twins Day, there's a Favorite Rock Band Shirt Day, um, sports team, and I forget the.
School colors.
No, I didn't, oh, school colors, thank you. No superhero this week, instead it's a rock your band.
What's your county colors day? Do we have colors?
County colors are blue and green. So, yeah, each day, and the announcement is ready to go out, I think. And then, as we've done the last few years, we'll bring the ice cream truck in in July, when it's a little warmer. But Sweetly's will be back at each location, as they did the last few years.
And you didn't forget about that one.
And, and HR is setting up, I believe, in August, a night with the Tacoma baseball team, so.
And then Taylor Swift's coming up Friday.
I think that they do have tickets to the Swifties, so, so, but yeah. So there are plans, and we appreciate everything our employees do.
I need to dust off my cowboy hat again. It came as Commissioner Edwards, and then he came in with a baseball cap that day instead of his cowboy hat.
Ruined everything. Which week is this, exactly?
So that is the week of May 3rd, it's next week, I believe.
I need to get my schedule there and start coordinating outfits now.
Yep.
So I think that there's a email that our accounting manager will be sending out soon.
To my inbox. I know I missed that one because I would have been excited about Twins Day.
Do, yeah, it'd be interesting. We could do an, we could do an Angels and Dodgers Otani.
Ah, I love it. Alright.
Alright, well, that's good. Thank you for that update. And then, um, Commissioner Mihia, you, you're basically talking about having, um, certificates go to each department. Okay, that's easy to do.
Yeah, we'll work on that for sure.
Okay, then we'll have opportunity for the public to address the board, county manager's update. Assuming there's nothing we know of at this juncture.
Correct.
Alright, so items three, A through I is the consent agenda. Public Works is first, resolution to move petty cash funds.
Teresa Zama.
Good morning. Teresa Wallen, Fiscal, Fiscal Manager, Thurston County Public Works. Um, this is just a technicality to move the change funds. We have two change funds at Public Works for our utility customers when they pay cash. And due to the utility consolidation, we need to, um, just move those to the new fund numbers. So it's clearly a technicality. We have two change funds. One has nine hundred dollars in it, one has six hundred dollars.
So this is something of a, of a, connected to our consolidation of the different utilities?
Correct. It's just a technicality to move these, um, change funds. They, they live in a, in a fund and the, and they're in the old fund, so this moves them to the new fund numbers.
Any questions for Teresa? Nope, okay, thank you. Three M is treasure item, sale of tax titled property via private negotiation. And the treasure, Jeff Gavin's here.
Good morning.
Good morning. Oh, okay. We've got a whole slew.
One, yeah, wow.
One, two, three, four, five. Six.
So five of them are adjacent properties that are all together. And they're in Deschutes Village, and we were approached, we were actually approached by somebody who bought another property in the Deschutes Village. It's a very tiny little neighborhood off of Vale Cut Off Road, south of Rainier. Um, primarily a, like a camping type vacation property. There's, they don't have any water supply or anything like that. Um, so anyway, then we heard from somebody else who happened to be a friend of the guy that bought the other property in there. And so the guy who bought the other property in there said, oh, never mind, just let him buy it. And so we were in the process of getting this negotiation completed with this purchaser. And we heard from, the next door neighbor called us, the, the neighbor that owns the property next door called us. And we told her that we were working with this guy, and she said, okay, that's okay. I just thought it might be kind of, kind of fun to own him. Because apparently, a prior owner of these five properties, don't know who, excavated the properties, and so now they're filled with water. And the person's idea was that they were going to create a fishing pond. So, um, without understanding, you know, you gotta clean out the water once in a while and stuff like that. So basically, it's a pond, and the, the woman that called, called me that owns the property next door said, yeah, right now it's home to two or three beavers. And, uh, she said, if that guy wants to buy them, let him buy them. So that's the first five that are on my list today.
Is that it for today?
Uh, and then we got one more.
Oh.
Uh, Boston Harbor, uh, be, it's, um, an interior property that is being purchased by an adjacent property owner.
And the association knows, and I've spoken with them about it, and so...
Yeah, we...
Thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, we met with them specifically about that property, and they have no issues.
Thank you, Jeff. I know that could become sensitive.
I have no questions.
Why allotted thirty minutes for this, Commissioner? Well, we're ahead of schedule then.
Oh, man.
Questions, alright. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Alright.
Looking forward to that ice cream truck.
There is a Dick's hamburger truck, though, that I'm gonna lobby for next year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I saw it on the...
I'll be on board with that.
A mobile, they have a mobile truck. Um, okay, auditor lists for April twenty second, April twenty ninth.
Auditor list?
We probably will get those and... Any questions maybe next week if any? Okay, let's jump to item four A. Under the commissioner's office, setting a public hearing for animal control related fees and charges.
How do we have? This one's under our office. You wanna cover this one, Rob?
Is Nicole here?
Nope.
She is not, but I'm happy to...
Yeah, let me get you, Rob.
That's okay. Commissioners, as you'll recall, uh, Nicole briefed the board previously. One of the things that we needed to update because we actually had fees codified, and in order to be able to amend those, the, the intent with this change is to pull the fee schedule out of the code, uh, make some updates to that, minor updates, but then be able to have the board establish the, the fees and charges um, by resolution instead. At the same time, we'll be bringing a resolution so that there is parity of the fees that are established by JazzCon, um, so that we are consistent with the, the other jurisdictions.
So we're doing both things?
Correct.
The enabling action and then the actual update?
Code change and then the update to the...
And the update, you say, just conforms to the other jurisdictions?
Correct. That was per, per prior board conversation. Recall, I think, I can't remember which planning session, but we, it was one of our...
The February one, when I was up here.
Can I see a red line copy of the ordinance and kind of see the, what those changes are?
Yeah, the board, and I have not, uh, reviewed this. I don't know that you've seen this yet. So we'd like the opportunity to review.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks so much, Rob. Appreciate your work on that. Send it out to all the commissioners.
Okay, then we'll have another review next week if there's any additional questions. Uh, next up is five A, Community Planning Economic Development Subconco, uh, Sub Consultant Contract with Washington Water Trust.
Someone from CPED to go over this item?
No one from CPED online.
Maybe the back to back staff discombobulated here.
We can skip that if, uh, anyone...
I'll, I'll track them down.
We'll track somebody down. Let's skip ahead and then we'll come, we'll double back. Public Health and Social Services, six A, contract with C Y S with homeless services emergency funds. Keely Marinoff, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Keely Marinoff with Public Health and Social Services. Um, yeah, so, uh, this is a, a request that came from, um, C Y S through the, um, Homeless Services Advisory Board through their, um, emergency homeless services fund process. Uh, their showers have been, um, they've al, they've always struggled a little bit. They, they, but they were able to hang on by just some routine maintenance on a, on a quarterly basis. But it's gotten to the point where the walls have got mold on them, the, the tiles are broken, and it's starting to leak down into the first floor. And so they presented this request through that process, the emergency fund process. And the Homeless Services Advisory Board did, um, approve it for recommendation to the R H C. And it came before the R H C, um, last week on Wednesday, and, um, the R H C also approved their recommendation. And so this is, got bumped, um, to this, the May seventh agenda, um, just due to the urgency of the, of the need to have these fixed so that they can continue services for the young people who access Rosie's Place. Um, and so that is basically it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Maybe, Keely, really quickly, do you mind going over that, like, new, um, emergency services, uh, proceed, uh, policy that has been set in place just so the board knows?
Sure.
The, you know, just the process that people have to go through or organizations have to go through now in order to request these funds?
Sure. So, um, in the past, there was a, the, the, oh, boy, the C I P. I'm forgetting what the acronym stands for, um, but it was prior to the...
Partnership.
Thank you. If it's not, if it's not my acronym, I tend to not remember, so, um...
Feel your pain, Keely.
So there, that, there was a process, and, and in fact, this, this process was based on that original one. Where, um, there were agencies that were coming directly to, um, either circumventing the, um, the C I P, coming, um, forward with emergency requests for funds. Um, and it felt a little bit disjointed, so they put together this process. And so it kind of went to the wayside once the R H C came into being. Um, and we, we worked both the Homeless Services Advisory Board and the, um, the, uh, Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board, both worked on separate processes. So the idea is, um, there's some set criteria and eligibility. Um, the fund is a set aside of up to two hundred thousand dollars every year. Um, those funds are not for, um, if they didn't budget correctly, or they, you know, they, they actually needed more funds than what they applied for. It's not that. It, it, they have to indicate the ways in which if they don't receive the funding, um, how it could cause, you know, harm to their programs or to, uh, might, might, um, cause homelessness inadvertently or impact people experiencing homelessness entering their programs. That it's, uh, kind of a one time deal, that they haven't asked for emergency funds in the last couple of years, that it's not a brand new program, but one that exists and just, um, needs help in, um, in situations. This is a perfect example of what the, um, the emergency fund can be used for. So they, um, reach out, um, and then they fill out, and, um, it's not a formal form. We just ask them to send in a, a request proposal that addresses some of the, the eligibility criteria to the Homeless Services Advisory Board. They consider it, and they do or do not move forward with that, that recommendation to R H C. And then R H C will or will not accept that recommendation, and then it will move to the Board of County Commissioners. So these are also agencies that we already are in contract with.
Thank you, Keely.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, let's double back to item five A. I see Ashley arrive from CPED. Thank you, Ashley. We are looking to address the item regarding subconsultant contract with Washington Water Trust.
Yeah.
Nobody in the room knew what it was about.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, you got through a lot of agenda items really fast. Um...
After yesterday, we're very efficient.
Efficient today.
No. Oh, well, this is a really great partnership opportunity. Um, we actually, uh, helped Washington Water Trust, um, apply for this stream flow restoration grant. Um, and basically with a, a role of being a technical support. You probably already know this, but you've got an amazing, um, water services data team, um, in community planning, and Washington Water Trust is looking to, um, have them be on their team and do a lot of the technical pieces of this project. Um, this helps fulfill our, our obligations to offset permit exempt wells in the Chehalis Basin. Um, and it is probably gonna be some pretty innovative, innovative work that comes out of it. So this is just a contract that we're setting up so that we can receive funds from Washington Water Trust to lead, um, grantee. And happy to answer questions.
So we're the, they're subcon, we're like helping them do their thing rather than, than helping us do something we're trying to do?
Yep, they're eligible to also apply for, for grants, and Department of Ecology doesn't, they won't, um, have multiple grantees that they issue an award to. Otherwise, we would probably be a co-grantee. Um, but in this case, we're gonna be a subconsultant.
And for the county managers, maybe, this, when you see Stream Flow Restoration Act, that's when I was giving that kind of water overview.
Yeah.
That, that's what was the first fix. When the court said you can't be issuing permits unless you've planned for offsetting projects to offset the impact of permit exempt wells.
Gotcha.
The fix that the legislature came up with was called the Stream Flow Restoration Act, and there's grant programs out there. And this sounds like one of the pro, one of the projects that was in our plan.
Yep.
So that you're actively improving the waterway, not just...
They have to show that their project is gonna create an, an additional water benefit, quantity benefit. And then provided that stacks up against the projection of, of wells' impact, then hopefully it all nets out.
Got it.
It gets adaptively managed along the way as well.
And it, it might be something good to queue up for a future briefing. Um, not only for the county manager, but we probably have two new county commissioners since we've really done a deeper dive on the water resource inventory.
I agree, and what we could do is, is use the Deschutes, the status of the Deschutes, because the...
Great idea.
The Nisqually and the Chehalis both came up with agreed plans, but the Deschutes did not. So as I mentioned before, so kind of knowing where that's at, and is it called, you know, like, I don't think the board's had a recent update on the Deschutes watershed plan and what's in it and what ecology changed from our draft that almost made the finish line. And we could give the kind of historical background as well for the new folks.
That would be great. We also have, um, some really exciting projects that are moving forward, um, in all of the basins, um, that we're responsible for. So we could share that as well.
That'd be great. Commissioner Edwards?
Maybe, uh, at the same time, we could hear back, like, how many water wires around the state is ecology dealing with? Because I think that's what's been the holdup. There's a lot of places that couldn't come to agreement.
They had a schedule, but yeah, it's starting to stack up.
Kind of stacking up. And then it sounds like this whole program kind of fits in with Commissioner Mihia's, uh, one water stuff, doesn't it?
It's one piece of one.
Yeah. Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, thank you. One, one, one eighteen.
Okay, then that brings us to Public Works, seven A. Award of Master Contracts for Furnishing a Supply of Various Asphalt Materials. Mike Lowman is back.
Hello, Commissioners. Um, for this item, Public Works is requesting the board award three master contracts for furnish i, furnishing, excuse me, a supply of various kinds of asphalt materials and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contracts. In March of this year, the board approved a call for sealed bids to furnish road operations with various asphalt materials. And on April eleventh, three bids were received. All bidders submitted reasonable unit rates to be considered in the evaluation of individual purchase orders. Uh, Public Works is requesting to award master contracts to each of the three vendors, Granite Construction, Lakeside Industries, and Miles Resources. Uh, the master contracts are for zero dollars, and funds are obligated from the road fund budget at the time a purchase order is issued to the vendor with available supply and at the lowest price. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any more questions?
I, I do have one question, Mike. Could, could you take a look and give us an idea of the increase in the cost of asphalt products over the last, I don't know, three, four years, five years, whatever? Just to kind of show one of the reasons that we're being restricted. We don't have a lot of money, but also the cost of product is going up. Is that a possibility?
Absolutely. I'll have that next week for you.
Thanks.
Okay, another question for Mike. Let's move on to seven B, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Wash Dot U S one oh one Schneider Creek product, project. This is actually Kim's item. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager. Go ahead, Tim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this item is a resolution calling for sealed bids and authorizing the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the Washington State Department of Transportation, U S one oh one Schneider Creek Stormwater retrofit project. Uh, this is a project that's on the, that's in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Public Works budget and on the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine, uh, stormwater capital improvement program. Uh, the stormwater retrofit project is designed to address water quality for approximately four acres of high, high traffic roadway. Uh, the treated stormwater will be conveyed to an outlet structure with energy dissipation to reduce the bank erosion that is occurring, and the outlet will discharge to Schneider Creek and eventually eld inlet. Uh, similar to how we charge stormwater fees to our own county, uh, roadways, we also charge fees to, uh, D O T roadways. Um, uh, the D O T pays annual fees of roughly two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, which we transfer into our stormwater capital program. And per statute, these D O T fees are, uh, used to mitigate the impacts of state... of state right-of-way runoff and meet the objectives of the local stormwater utility. So the Schneider Creek project will be the second of three projects that have either been completed or are planned to be completed with those DOT funds. And with that, I would answer any questions the board may have.
Don't have any, Tim?
Great.
Thank you. Standing items in, and that's in from May 7th, so. Let's go to Proclamations and Awards. Director of the Board, Amy Gates.
The proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Day is included in your packet. Lynn Crowley, again, of the Asian Pacific Islanders Coalition of the South Peget Sound Chapter, will attend to accept the proclamation along with hopefully a few other members of the chapter. The proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week is also included. Human Resources and Public Works will jointly accept the proclamation. And I wrote a stack papers over there, but I have the timeline from Human Resources of their activities for Public Service Recognition Week and Spirit Week. The next proclamation is scheduled for May 21st for Peace Officers Memorial Day. So I'll be reaching out to the Sheriff's Office. And if there's any interest, perhaps WAPA, the Washington Fraternal Order of Peace. I believe they typically host a celebration for a memorial. We could invite their president as well. And I'd also like to reach out to groups soon for the proclamation for Pride Month. Perhaps the parents, families, and friends, couples, and fans, and gays in Thurston County. And I think there's another group that we've had come in the past to accept the proclamation. I'll return to them as well.
Question about the Public Service Recognition Week. This is very specific to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight groups. And neglects a large part of the county employees. I'm wondering if we could add a clause or change it in some way to recognize all county employees, not just these groups.
You talking about the second paragraph? Yeah, I'm not saying that's not a bad idea, but I do want to say that like, I think we eliminated like EMS Week and there were some others that were like, where there were some proclamations specifically.
Certain ones are called out, but it does not recognize any other if you read it.
Okay.
Should we go over some language, Amy?
And that EMS Week thing might, like the lack of us doing that, there's, now that it's 50th year for Medic One, we might get poked later down the road when it gets closer to their 50th anniversary to bring something back online in recognition of that.
I mean...
Just, and I'm saying that because we had the discussion last week about no more impromptu proclamations, we might get requested for a special one.
Right, I'm just saying this is very specific to certain groups and we should recognize all county employees.
Well, kind of on that line of recognizing like, you know, with the firefighters piece of it, you know, not to say that they don't deserve to be recognized, but we don't have any firefighters under, they're not county employees. So if we're going to make it county-specific, I think.
Yeah, Amy and I...
There's a need to be county-specific. It just needs to recognize.
The Medic One employees that we pay for are also firefighters.
Amy and I can come up with some language that accomplishes some options, yeah.
So we can be more inclusive.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we're not recognizing like our elections workers, for example. We're talking about kind of IT over there and cybersecurity. Assessors and treasurers and courts.
Any of the internal service organizations that make the county run, not here.
Just get an employee roster and staple it to the bottom of the proclamation.
It's one way to do it. All the defenders. This will be a little more broad.
Okay, so we will look at a revised draft next week for that proclamation, which is scheduled for... So we need to make sure that's addressed this week, all right? Okay, then we'll go to advisory boards and commissioners.
Yes, as you know, the recent ring through closed on April 28th. Applications received during that time period are included on the cover page in your packet. I'm working with advisory board staff contacts to confirm applicant eligibility and will bring the applications next week to you. The Veterans Advisory Board reviewed their applications at their meeting last night, so will provide their recommendations at the same time.
I'll just update the board that my efforts to secure a professional personnel management representative for the Salary Commission have failed. I doubled back with the people that I had asked to send out inquiries through their circles and they got no takers.
I put it out to the EDC folks that we need an HR professional.
Okay, very good. Yeah, so keep working on it because I didn't, I wasn't able to get anybody to bite on that. Any other questions on advisory boards and commissions?
Have we put something out for the Veterans Advisory Board now that we've kind of approved it through?
We had actually received about eight applications for the Veterans Advisory Board. There were six new positions. So there are...
Veteran Advisory Board staff through public health, I'm looking through. Can you make sure that, you make sure that you communicate to Mark, to communicate to the board our decision yesterday to not divert that funding toward the assessor? Just want to make sure they are aware of that. Okay.
And so will these applications just be going to like, be specific ones and then once they've made a recommendation, it's going to come back to the board?
I plan to bring all applications to the board next week.
Okay.
The Veterans Advisory Board had a meeting last night, so they have the chance to review them early.
Can I ask about Noxious Weed Control Board?
Yes.
Seat four and seat five, do those, do those numbers relate to commissioner districts?
Yes, the weed district, so weed districts are different than commissioner districts.
That's right, they have a different map.
Yes, they have a different map. And the map is included online, it's included in the recruitment.
So it may not, may not have anything to do with Commissioner Claus in Fornier's District.
I was told that I have a vacancy and Edwards has a vacancy for the Noxious Weed.
I believe so. I can bring the maps next week so we can overlay.
It might be worth it just so we can help our outreach efforts if we know where they have to live. All right, anything else here? Let's see. Store commission's not doing too bad. Two vacancies.
I swear that was one, that one.
That one had a huge list at one point, so. Any other questions on this? Okay, thanks. PIO check-in is next.
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Porter, Communications Manager. I had a communications staff team, staff retreat last Friday. We did a whiteboarding exercise to crosswalk our internal and external strategies and will be finalizing our internal and external comms plan for 2024 based on that conversation to include capturing some baseline data. My team met with Superior and District Court administrators a couple of weeks ago to learn more about the courts and see how we can support them. We'll be working with some projects to include a video project about the day and the like and then help with recruiting for some of their key positions. We've received camera equipment, which will allow Devin to begin working on more videos. We've had a ton of interest. This Thursday, he's going to be going out to the Coleman Ranch to film cows and talk about the grazing efforts on habitat land, so look forward to that, it'll be pretty cool.
When, when will they be out there? This Thursday? At what time?
So today I'm having a conversation with a media production company for a show called Viewpoint with Dennis Wayne to see if there's any interest in them coming to highlight Thurston County. They actually reached out to me and so they're going to talk to me about what potentially they could do and come and highlight our beautiful area.
Can I get Randy Quaid? His crazy brother, he's way more interesting. Some Steve Buscemi or one of, what was that other guy's name? One really crazy one.
And then we have The Insider, it's an internal employee newsletter. It went out mid-April. It had been quarterly due to staffing, but now it's going to be monthly, so expect that around the first week of each month. And then lastly, don't forget to sign up for the Friday Five if you haven't already.
The Insider was in paper form around. Is that going to be something that's going to continue or?
We'll probably not put out a print as many, but there will be one or two in each area so that if people forget to look at their email, they'll have an opportunity to look at it.
Megan, maybe doing a mid-year report on kind of how like communications has, you know, I guess I will say improved or how you think, yes. You know, like how the two positions are kind of like assisting you and knowing that we've kind of grown that area of the county and seeing like where we've landed and kind of also seeing like the vision. And I know that you're working on those internal and external policies, but would be great to kind of see that in a mid-year report from our GIO.
Yeah, I think the commissioner communication and even collaboration with the departments on where we're going, close out of resources. I was very impressed going to Megan's meeting. She let me in for a little bit and seeing what they're thinking about. But I believe we have a huge opportunity to get the message out, both internal, external, and create brand, organizational brand and awareness of what's going on.
Okay, any other questions for Megan? All right, it's 10:21. Let's take 15 minutes and come back at, let's say, 10:40. We'll be picking up with an executive session under item 6, sub 1. We are picking up with Item Six on the agenda, which is an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101A1 to consider if in compliance with any required data security breach disclosure under RCW 19255010 and 4256590 and with legal counsel available. Information regarding the infrastructure and security of computer and telecommunications networks, security and service recovery plans, security risk assessments, security test results, to the extent that they identify specific system vulnerabilities and other information that if made public may increase risk to the confidentiality, integrity or availability of agency's security or to information technology infrastructure assets. Information technology security breach is the specific topic approximately 30 minutes to be allotted and board action may follow.
Who is Curtis? Is that?
Uh, Public Works. Public Works.
So I need to turn out. And then who is the attorney that's available?
I don't have an attorney available.
There has to be an attorney.
I don't have an attorney available.
All right, it's eleven twelve. We are out of executive session in our agenda setting work session for April thirtieth. We're now up to six sub two, which is other commissioner items, last piece of our agenda for the morning. Any commissioner items for today?
I was gonna ask about the RFP to the paper of record. What's the latest with that?
So we have finally heard back that the Olympian is interested. They did not receive the notice. We're legally required to send a notice to all papers that might be interested. They had not received the notice. So I hadn't connected yet with Leonard and Amy, but my recommendation is to reject all bids.
And go back out?
Reissue the RFP, do the appropriate notices to both newspapers who are eligible, and then see what we get.
So the Olympian said they didn't receive the...
So if you, i-is it purely based on price?
No. No, it is not. We can take other things into consideration like distribution, which we have in the past, and publication cycle. So our major concern, and we've contracted with the Nusqually in the past, is the ability to, it's gotta be in print. It can't just be internet. So our ability to get things into a weekly cycle adds time to our legal notices. And that had the two times we've tried the Nusqually, that's been a issue.
Like they need bigger, more lead time or something?
Yeah.
Which slows down processes for us sometimes?
Right, or if we have something come up, we just can't get it into the paper. So the Olympian has a more regular cycle.
You sure you weren't mentioning that they have an online publication?
But it's gotta be printed. Legally, it has to be printed.
They also have print.
They have print.
Yeah. So I didn't look at that.
You'll get it back out then? Okay.
So again, hadn't had a chance to connect with the county manager yet, but that would be my recommendation.
So I mean, how about if, so if it reopens again and Nusqually News is our only option, I mean...
Had the Olympian not responded, or had they said that they weren't interested, or, you know, simply dropped the ball, then I would have been recommending just going within Nusqually. But there, we have a separate paper, and if there's a possibility that they were not legally notified of an opportunity, then that's a default of the county. We need to rectify that.
How were they not notified if we put out an RFP? I mean, that's notifying evidence.
So I'd be happy to connect with you, to show you the legal requirements, but I think we need to do our due diligence.
And they're saying we did not.
That is what we are hearing.
Looks like a conversation offline might be beneficial. So I'd like to look at it as well.
I would like to be included as well.
Sure.
Yep. Get something together, the four of us.
I mean, you may ultimately decide to go within Nusqually, but I think that we need to ensure that it was properly noticed.
Commissioner Edwards?
What's the new activity on the audit, or lack of auditor?
So it was delayed at the request of the state audit, and that is the information that we got from Diana late yesterday.
I can tell you, Commissioner, that, you know, I gave you kind of a summary a couple weeks ago, and nothing's really changed. It's gonna be pretty much right in line with what I told you.
I don't think the meeting was moved because there's any new information. I think it was more of a scheduling.
We've had a, we've had a meeting just trying to figure out, like, what's the, is there any flexibility along the lines of the issues? And, you know, what, what could the county put in? I mean, it's really just been going through the process.
Just seems like this is a very unusual year. I'll just let it go at that.
Yeah, we don't know why they, why they rescheduled yesterday. You know why there was a little bit of delay? Because we asked for an internal meeting to question some of the things we were hearing. So there was a little bit on our side, but then there's been a couple times where they've canceled meetings.
Matt, I had requested that meeting back in November, and it took that long to get it scheduled.
Yeah, so we're not sure why they're moving so slow. But we've been given kind of their initial report, and then we've written up our response to any possible findings and those responses.
Received a draft from them. It's my understanding that a draft response has been submitted to the SAO.
We also had a meeting with them where we sat down and talked through their draft response. I thought it was pretty productive because we could in real time hear what their perspective was and understand why they saw things the way they did. And sometimes it was just a perspective about how you interpret some very nuanced language. And we were very upfront with, we believed it was nuanced language, and we believe that our due diligence of seeking to understand how to apply what we applied was thorough, and they said yes, but at the end of the day, that was our determination. So we're including what we did, the process by which we looked to get the information, so that we can make the right decision. We are putting all of that in our, our draft response.
Yeah, because the way they write things, you know, it's just kind of cut and dry. Yeah. And we were, and so at the first, we didn't even understand how they got there. So we had to kind of question that. There was question, there was, there was conversations between attorneys and then a follow-up with staff. And then there was a question about, well, can, you're acknowledging the complexity here and the nuance. Can, can you put that in your, in your finding, you know, can you put that in there so it shows how incredibly complex and nuanced this is? And they were kind of like, well, that's really for you. You can put that into your response. So we took that and tried to, without being too long-winded, show what the county did to dot i's and cross t's so that if somebody's looking at it, it's not just like, oh, you just violated the rule. It's like, well, not on purpose.
So does the response then come to this board to accept? Or is that something that's just done internally at the executive?
The, the response with the, those that were in a group had input on it, and it's the auditor that's actually submitting the response on behalf of the county, with input though.
Okay.
With input. I, I think if you would like to see the response, we can circulate it.
If it's a draft response, do you want to do that?
Not my email. I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. So you might, there might be some caution. I don't know.
I'm just curious, like, what, what's next? Like, do we review that before the exit interview or exit conference? Or is, because that's when you present the county's response, right?
Right. We present the response when we receive their draft audit report.
Which we ha-we have, right?
We saw a draft.
Okay.
We drafted our response and sent them a draft of that. They're doing a little more work. They've not sent their final draft audit report, if you will, at which point we will complete our response letter.
The final draft has our response letter in it, right?
The final draft does not have our response. The final report has our response.
Okay, final report has our response.
Yeah, so it's still in a draft stage.
What's going back and forth? Is there some reviewing of materials that help to look at the, one of the findings? The scope by which we can allow or disallow certain things? So there's some pretty detailed work going on as to looking at line items as to what they understand. That's how technical and specific it is. It's like, this can be allowed, this can't. Whereas we thought there was a broader application, and, and we're told by our research and reaching out to the state offices that you could apply it that way. So that's part of what our response is gonna show.
Okay.
I have one other issue.
Go ahead. Unless there's somebody else has one. Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Going back to yesterday, I'm gonna throw myself under the bus.
Oh, so? You have my attention?
I, I was not very comfortable on the decision-making process in which the boys voted against the girls. I'll just put, you know, I'm just saying that because that's the issue. And when I say that, what I mean is that I kind of depend on staff to give me direction as to what is best for the taxpayers of Thurston County, because I'm not a budget person. And so I, in that instance, yesterday, I surely would have liked to heard from staff a recommendation about which is the best thing to do, which is the best approach to that particular issue that we took that split vote on, so.
I thought that staff were pretty clear about our recommendation.
I don't know.
I don't know how I could have been more clear.
Yeah.
I mean, we had kind of an either/or and back and forth. What do you think is best? And that's why I'm saying I'm throwing myself under the bus.
I appreciate that. I don't know how Nicole or I could have been more clear.
I think Nicole has some ideas, and that's something that we can come back to the board with.
On process, yes, but on those particular items, we were pretty clear.
Well, that, we, we got, we got caught into the question of the timing of it. I mean, I think the recommendation about whether to do it or not ultimately was clear, but when the, I think Commissioner Klaus, I think, asked, well, is it, does it matter? Does it change anything? Does it, does it make it, you know, worse or better if this decision were made at a later point? And then Nicole really jumped in, frankly, like very strongly and said, doesn't matter. It's not gonna prejudice anything, which made it kind of sound like, well, then why, you know?
Well, that made it confusing to me.
Yeah, it made it confusing because the board has, the board in general, if, if any of us have a concern about, or if any of us want a little more time, and we're being told there's no prejudice to anyone to a delay, we usually respect, it's been a general practice that we respect that and say, well, if no one's prejudiced here, and, and, and any commissioner wants some time to look into something or whatever, then why wouldn't we do that? Like, just out of courtesy to each other. So anyway, that kind of, kind of confused, we got, we got really stuck on that piece, and it kind of got lost, what Commissioner Edwards is talking about, that the ultimate recommendation was that we needed to go forward on this. And if, you know, to try to accomplish the best result for the taxpayer or whatever. However you want to characterize that.
Sure. And we've got, you know, outside, outside.
Comments, let's say yes.
Yeah, okay. And, and then sometimes those comments turn into something else. If, if what the person doesn't feel, maybe we've made the right decision, and I don't, I want to make, I always want to make the right decision. That's kind of my goal being here. And so when I,
We all do.
When I get confused about something like that, it, I, I'd like a little clearer direction or at least not be pushed. And when she said, well, it doesn't matter, I think I probably should have, I'm throwing myself under the bus here. I'm taking responsibility for not maybe acting as assertive as I could have. I could have said, hey, now wait a minute. I don't get it. Let's, let's watch this. But I just, I, I'd like to have a little clearer direction, and I don't know how my seat, seatmates feel about it, but.
I think that's good input when something starts getting kicked around. I mean, we had a very long meeting and we started up.
And maybe I was just tired.
We started a point and, and the discussion goes, so it's good feedback for us as staff to try to reframe and say, here's the decision point, here's why it's important, and here's why they're bringing it forward. I mean, that, you know, I think it's a iterative process, and we're always open to grow and learn. But yesterday was a marathon meeting, lots of decisions before you, and from a process standpoint, you know, we'll continue to look to improve.
Okay.
I just bring it up because I'm still a little confused on the whole thing, so.
Now they're talking about ransomware and dark web. They're just confusing us all even more.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's good for me. I just curious.
County managers? No. Okay. We're adjourned.
See you at two?
Yeah, two P M.